Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Here.
Mayor Terry?
Here. That will move on to item six, the Metro Cable Television Announcement. Will the clerk please read the announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.stacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Wednesday, November 8th at 2:00 p.m. and Thursday, November 9th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight, the presentation of colors will be brought to us by the Boy Scout Troop 363. I'll ask everyone to remain standing following the Pledge of Allegiance for invocation. A change from the agenda that was posted, Wayne Langford is no longer available tonight. We will have President Daniel Barr from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, who will deliver our invocation. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Boy Scouts.
Attention! Color Guard, advance! Hold! Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Salute! Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color Guard, reform rank! Color Guard, dismiss! Scouts and audience, at ease.
Let's go ahead and thank those guys for that.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day and for the opportunity that we have to gather here for this city council meeting. We are grateful for our leaders, and we ask thee to bless them with thy Spirit, to bless them in their thoughts, words, and actions, that they may best serve thee and the constituents of this city. Father, we ask for a special blessing for those that have been affected by the terrible tragedies in New York and Southern Springs, Texas. And we also ask thee to bless those that are recovering from the natural disasters, that they may feel comforted in this time of need. Father, we ask for these things, and we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our presentations. And our first item is item 9.1, Rancho Cordova Police Department Update on Crime Statistics and Downward Trend in Crime. For our Chief of Police and our Assistant Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. To my right, I just want to introduce Acting Chief, Assistant Acting Chief Jeff Sheldorf and Jeff Rodriguez, who is our Crime and Intelligence Analyst for Rancho Cordova Police Department. I know the mayor teased out a little bit of this information at the State of the City Meeting on Thursday, but I-
It's good news. I wasn't waiting. I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, this is actually very good news. I know you've all had a chance to take a look at it, but I thought we'd go through it tonight in more detail and talk about some of the way we came up with the information, some of the reasons why some of this crime data is the way it is, and some more of the details, and then comparing us against some of our partners in the region. So this is just a quick little agenda what we'll go over. We'll talk about the update of the city crime data, the violent crime versus property crime, how it's denominated in the UCR, which is Uniform Crime Reporting, how population changes affect the numbers, crime rate based on the population change, which has been normalized so we can actually compare it to other jurisdictions, and then we can open up to questions or discussions. And please feel free to jump in with any questions as we go along. So basically, I'm not sure if you're familiar with uniform crime reporting, but we report on a monthly basis to Cal DOJ, and they report to the FBI information on major type-one crimes in our area. So each jurisdiction does this throughout the country. In California, they all go through the state, and then they get filtered to the FBI. Uniform crime reporting is basically focused on Part I crimes because they're the most likely to be reported, and they happen in such frequency that provide adequate basis for comparison among jurisdictions. So typically, the more serious crimes and also the violent crimes. These are broken down into two different categories, major categories, which is violent and property crimes. So what we did, we went back six years to try to give an idea of the crime trends of what was going on here in Rancho Cordova from 2011 to 2016, which is the last year we have a total year of crime information. So the first slide talks about violent crimes in general. So violent crimes include homicide, sexual assault, robbery, and aggravated assault, which is basically assault with a deadly weapon. From 2011 through 2016, violent crime in Rancho Cordova decreased 24.1%. So if you notice, we'll go into some more detail on what some of the causes of this were later on in the presentation, but there was something to note. In 2015, we did have an increase in aggravated assault and homicides here in Rancho Cordova. That was mostly contributed to two different gang factions. We're having a gang war here in Rancho Cordova. To combat that, we implemented many new programs here in Rancho to deal with it, including the Crime Suppression Unit, and also the Sheriff's Gang Unit participated very heavily in trying to quell that situation. So as you see, in 2016, we did have a decrease after that, but 2015 was a pointed year for us. The next category was property crimes, which includes burglary, larceny, which is theft, motor vehicle theft, and vehicle burglaries. Again, from 2011 to 2016, property crime decreased 24.6%. Arson is also tracked in this when we report it to the state, but the FBI does not track arson because that's not universally tracked throughout the country, so arson numbers are not included in that. But we do not have a big arson problem here in Rancho Cordova anyways. Again, we'll talk about some more specifics on the next slide on what causes some of these trends to happen, but one big thing to note is Prop 47, which occurred in 2014. Prop 47 was enacted by the voters in November of 2014, which basically changed the way crime is defined for the nonviolent type of crime, so theft, drug use, things like that. It basically converted a lot of crimes that were traditionally felonies down to misdemeanors. So in the past, when we'd provide people, they'd go to jail for committing a certain crime, now they'd get a ticket. So it really tied our hands when it was dealing with some of the prolific offenders in the community. We do believe that the increase in 2015 is likely a result of major releases from the jails and lower penalties that are now the people we're dealing with when they do commit the crimes, they're literally getting tickets. So the next slide is, this is the total together, where we're talking about the total crimes with both violent and property crimes together. So again, as you see the trending, together, we're down 24.5% from 2011 to 2016. Now, this is where I'd like to point out some milestones that occurred back from 2011 all the way up till now. In 2011, the state of California enacted AB 109, which was basically realignment, where the state decided that they were being overcrowded in the prisons, and so they realigned the prisoner population into the county systems. So basically, they released a bunch of inmates from state and transferred them back over to the county system. There's a lot of programs implemented in there to help reduce recidivism, and there was quite a few releases that were as part of that program. So in addition to that, they enacted a program called PRCS, which is Post-Release Community Supervision, where in the past, somebody would violate their parole after they were paroled out of prison, they would go back to prison. That all changed with this new rule. So with PRCS, an individual would be released into the community under the Probations Department supervision, and then if they were found violation of their parole, they would basically get either a 10-day flash incarceration, so they'd only go back to the county jail for 10 days, or at a maximum, 180 days. So in the old days, they would actually go back to prison, now they would just go back to the corrections. So it was basically revolving door. So as you see here on the chart, in 2011 to 2013, we do start to see an increase in crime. We do contribute a lot of that in part to AB 109. We do not have all the statistics put together, but we are working on that to get you some more detailed information. If you notice, in 2013, we do have a dip. We did have a hard time trying to identify exactly what caused that dip. In the next couple of slides, I'll show you, the region also shows a similar dip. One of the big things to note here in Rancho Cordova, in 2013, we did change the police and philosophy and implemented intelligence-led policing, which is a different way of working on problem-solving. So officers were now making decisions on using data versus their gut instinct. And so that was one thing we did change in 2013 that could have contributed to the lower crime in 2014. Again, back to Prop 47, in 2014, you do notice we did start to rise again into 2015. Prop 47 was enacted in November of 2014, so it really started to take effect in 2015. Upon that enactment, immediately, 43 inmates were released from the county jail because their crimes were now converted to misdemeanors that were previous felonies. Again, we had a large recidivism rate out of those 43. Within the next year, 60% of those people were back in custody for similar crimes that they were doing before. And to date, all but two have been back into the system based on crimes. And that's just out of the original 43 that were released immediately in November 2014.
So Prop 47 downgraded the set of crimes. 60 people were released in SAC County-
Forty-three, yes.
Forty-three.
Yes.
And as of now, 41 are back in for yet new crimes.
They've been back in maybe multiple times, yes. The problem with Prop 47 that we face is we no longer have a hammer to deal with some of those crimes before they can go to jail or violate their parole. When you take AB 109 in addition to Prop 47, we no longer can violate their parole, they just go on a 10-day flash incarceration. And then, in addition to that, they're getting tickets. So in the past, they would actually get, you know, it'd be felony, they'd go to jail or to prison. So when you put those two together, it's definitely an issue that we're facing. So that was in 2014. In 2015, the city enacted the Crime Suppression Unit as a result of a lot of this crime going up, and especially the gang crime. We have absolutely seen a reduction in crime, and we do contribute a lot of that to the CSU team. It's a very proactive team that focuses just on dealing with the issues. Again, they're working with intelligence-led policing, they're going off of data, and they focus specifically on problem areas and problem people that are causing the issues in Rancho Cordova. So with their high-profile response to things, we're confident that that is why we're starting to see a dip back into 2016 as it goes down. The officers feel it, the citizens feel it, even the bad guys feel it. They definitely know when the CSU team's out on the street. In 2016, Prop 57 was enacted. So we are still feeling that, and we haven't seen a huge result of Prop 57, which Prop 57 is basically a change in the way that parole is handled. People are now, inmates in prison are now eligible to get early releases than they were in the past because they've changed the way the crediting system that works for good behavior. So that was the biggest issue that Prop 57 addressed. We believe that because of AB 109 and Prop 47, though, most of that issue was already vetted, and we've seen all the results of that in 2014 and 2015. So Prop 57 has not been a huge impact to us that we've seen so far, but we are monitoring that, and we will be crunching those numbers to try to come back with you with some more information on that. That definitely is a difficult pickle to try to figure out there, though, because the data is very difficult to work with on that one. But we will be coming back with more information on that as we develop it. So what we've talked about so far is basically our Uniform Crime Stat for the last six years, not adjusted for population increase. So however, Rancho Cordova has enjoyed a huge population increase since 2011. So per the Department of California, Department of Finance, the population in Rancho Cordova has increased about 12.5% from 2011 to 2016. We started at about 65,006 14 in 2011, and in 2016, we were at 73,872. So the city of Rancho Cordova is the fastest-growing city in the Sacramento region. So we need to now incorporate that into the way we look at the UCR data because that will affect the numbers that we're presenting to you today. So the next slide will adjust the crime data based on a per 1,000 capita information. So basically, this is per 1,000 residents, which is a standard that we use for looking at that. This adjusts the crime data to basically normalize it so we can compare it to other regions in this area, other jurisdictions in the region, but it's also been normalized per 1,000. So when you do the adjustment for our population going up, we still see a downward trend in the crime data. In fact, it has even improved for us. So Rancho Cordova has enjoyed both population growth and lower actual reported crime. When we adjust it for the per 1,000, we've actually dropped 31.5% because population has gone up, but crime has actually continued to go down, which is actually very encouraging, and it's a very good sign. Typically, you would see, as population goes up, the crime would trend up with it, but we're not seeing that here in Rancho Cordova. So our ultimate number is actually 31.5% when adjusted for population. The next slide is actually a really good representation of where we sit in the region when we start looking at our partners in the other jurisdictions around us. So Rancho Cordova is the orange line, I mean, the red line above the orange one. And that's where we started back in 2011. And again, this is all adjusted for per 1,000 residents. The top line is the city of Sacramento, and then, as you see, we've been trending down, and we're third from the bottom, actually, as of end of 2016. So we're doing great as far as our trends are going. We are the largest, we experienced the largest drop in crime from 2011 to 2016 in the entire And as we're going into 2017, as of this August, we don't have the complete year yet, but we are still trending downwards. We are 4.4% lower this year than we were last August.
So talk a little bit more about the hierarchy of the lines. Does that indicate crime numbers?
Yes. So basically, it's per 1,000. So if you look at, let's say for SAC PD, which is the top line, let's say, I don't have the exact number, but on there, there are between 40 and 50 crimes per 1,000 residents. If you look at Rancho, this is for 2011. If you look at Rancho, we were at 33.96 per 1,000 residents. So basically, what we've done, we've normalized the data so you can easily compare it apples to apples amongst the different jurisdictions because it's based on per 1,000 residents. Even though Sacramento is so much bigger than us, it's been changed so everything's equal because it's based on per 1,000. So and then if you go look at, let's say, the city of Gault, which started off in 2011 as the lowest, they were down at around 20 crimes per 1,000, and then, as you see, their trend chart seems to go up.
Okay.
Did that make sense?
It did.
Okay. So by normalizing that data, by normalizing that data and doing it on a per 1,000, we were able to actually compare it, so we can see where we sit compared to the rest of the region. And again, I'm happy to say we are trending downwards, and we're heading down. We're the third from the bottom right now, and we do believe that'll continue to trend So a couple of things we're doing this year that we've been really focusing on to make sure we continue this downtrend. We have a much more increased collaboration with the public through our Neighborhood Policing Program and Community Oriented Policing. We've really put an emphasis on that and focusing on changing our policing model to very much engage the community. So we're much more tied with them because we need everybody to work on this problem together. We are really focusing on Part II crimes, which is more of the quality-of-life type crimes, where homelessness and things like that would fall into. So we're really trying to focus on those issues as well. So we hopefully will be coming back to you in the near future and talk a little bit more about those kinds of crimes as well. We are working, definitely working more seamlessly with other city departments to tackle issues that we're facing as a city, more now than ever we have in the past. We are partnering with Regional Transit. We're very excited about that new relationship that we have, where we are going to be focusing a lot of enforcement and public outreach on the stations here in Rancho Cordova. We have a great relationship and enjoy a great relationship with Rancho, Regional Transit Police Department and their Chief of Police. So we're very excited about that. And then also, we're implementing our homeless outreach team, which we're working together with code enforcement, with the PD, and then also with our navigator and the rest of the city to focus on solutions to some of the homeless issues that we're facing here. So that pretty much concludes what I have to say, but I'm open to questions if anybody has anything.
Questions for the chief?
I would just like to comment that after, you know, you've presented six years of data here, just about, and after well over a decade of sort of watching these numbers, growing our neighborhood sort of activity, trying to graph it and figure out where we were going, it's really satisfying to see so many moving parts finally sort of come together. You know, we have the resources, you have the legal authority to do some changes, we have, we've experimented with a few different solutions that have really worked, some that haven't, and we've adapted. And I think we're in a really unique spot in our city's history to make an enormous change here in public safety. And so I just want to commend you for your efforts in bringing this to us, sharing it with us, as well as all those things you just mentioned that are sort of going on right now out in the field that hopefully will make a big difference for the things that people really care about, those quality-of-life measures.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Prop 47 is one. 57 was another, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Yes.
And even with that, I know the Crime Suppression Unit, which we're able to do with Measure H money, and also with the Strong Neighborhood, we have that contract, that agreement with the two probation officers, and that has made a big difference, too. I know they can check on the people who are on probation much easier than if you would have to go to the judge and get a warrant and all that sort of thing, when they are answerable to these two guys, much more than your police would be able to do. And I think that's helped a lot, too.
Oh, absolutely. Having the probation here as part of our team has been huge. It's a great relationship again, and with Neighborhood Services, code enforcement, and the probation, and the RCPD, it's a great marriage.
Thank you.
Yep. Bob, I think actually that was a perfect comment. I should have said something about that myself. It's the coming together of all these different parts that are finally there. You know, code enforcement, you mentioned probation, we have a deputy district attorney assigned to us working on these issues. We have all the ordinances we just updated regarding property maintenance. We have ordinances we've done over the years in terms of being proactive in apartment maintenance, being sure that apartment owners are doing everything they're supposed to do, and rental property owners doing everything they're supposed to do. When you bring all of this stuff together for the full spectrum of law enforcement, we've even had CPS as a partner when we were doing light busters. I mean, it's really a remarkable thing we've done in Rancho Cordova that I don't think any other local jurisdiction has approached it this way. And you can see the results in those numbers when our crime rate is falling faster than any other local jurisdiction.
Absolutely. You nailed on the head. We do have CPS still in our office, and I was remiss not mentioning the DA's partnership. Having that resource in-house to deal with issues that are facing, that with the city attorney's office together, it's incredibly part of that. We have all the resources we need, all the tools available to us that we need to solve this problem.
Well, and we really appreciate you mentioning Regional Transit also. The new police chief over there is absolutely a take-no-quarters kind of person. She's very good and truly no-nonsense, and so I'm glad it's working out well.
Absolutely. Very fortunate to have her as a good partner, and she, her and I share a lot of the same philosophies, and we work very well together.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
Denise Bizano from my office is here this evening on another matter. She's worked very closely with PD on a number of these enforcement matters and worked very closely and successfully with the community prosecutor, so I, too, am very appreciative of the team that we've put together.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Sorry for stealing your thunder last week.
Oh, no, no, it was good. Good information. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item 9.2, which is recognition of the 25th anniversary of the Falls Cordova Community Partnership. And Robert Singer is somewhere in here. There he is.
Glad I get to do this because I can't be at your dinner.
So we have a proclamation here, and it's one of the longest ones I've ever seen.
Oh, it's not.
So you guys got a lot of stuff in here. Usually, when I get the long ones, I assign it to somebody else this year, but, all right. So we've got this proclamation here for the 25th anniversary for the Falls Cordova Community Partnership. Falls Cordova Community Partnership is a 501(c)(3) community-based nonprofit with the mission and vision to build strong families, meet the needs of struggling parents to increase self-efficiency, promote youth development through positive peer and adult relationships, and develop employment skills for individuals to achieve their goals. And whereas, the partnership brings together resources and programming in a family resource center model to create a one-stop location for services which encourage and support community members as they identify their needs and reach to achieve their goals to overcome cycles of child abuse, incarceration, and poverty. The partnership recognizes that each family has strengths and encourages the family to build on these to solve their own challenges. And whereas, the partnership was founded in 1992 with the mission to enhance the education, health, and well-being of children, youth, and adults of our community. And whereas, the partnership brings together resources and programming in a family resource center and job center to create a one-stop shop experience which encourages and supports families as they identify their own needs and reach their own goals. And whereas, see, I'm only about halfway through now. And whereas, in 2005, with the funding of the Roots and Horizons Mentoring Children of Prisoners Program, the partnership expanded to include services for youth ages 8 to 17 into its programming. And whereas, in 2008, the partnership developed community support services that provide resources and referrals, short-term case management, and emergency supplies for basic needs to families in crisis. Whereas, in 2009, the partnership began providing employment development services to both adults and youth, and today operate one of America's job centers. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize the 25th anniversary of the Falls Cordova Community Partnership as an important event in the history of our city, and I have signed and affixed the seal of our city and like to present this to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We gonna take a photo over here?
I just want to say how excited I am to be here for this recognition. Thank you to the city of Rancho Cordova. Our organization has had a longstanding history here in this community. I've been with the organization for 11 years, and to see the growth of our organization and the types of services that we provide to the community, I get to come and work in my passion every day. And I just want to express our appreciation and invite everyone in the community to come out and celebrate our 25-year anniversary with us. We're going to be hosting a celebration, actually, this Thursday, November 9th. We're going to be doing tours of our job center and our family resource center from 3:00 to 5:00, and then we're going to do a celebration from 5:00 to 6:00 at our family resource center located on Coloma Road. So I hope that everyone can make it out there. And just to express our appreciation for the support that we get from the community to help families in need when they need the most help at the time that they do. So thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
I'm looking out and still seeing Boy Scouts in our audience, and I think I was remiss in that I was supposed to remind folks that they have a really cool trailer out there to check out, right? Something to see out in the parking lot. So when you get the chance, you're done in here, I don't think we're necessarily going to get to see it unless you're staying here until pretty late tonight. We gotta get on to a couple other things. So with that, we'll move on to item 9.3 and invite Darcy Brewer, the Executive Director of the California Capitol Air Show, up to give a presentation on the air show. No, no, we're getting Terrence McNamara and Dave Sicket, or Nick Sicket, excuse me.
I think that's called the bait and switch.
I guess so.
Boo! Boo!
I saw her just luck over, but yeah. Gentlemen?
I am not an adequate replacement for Darcy Brewer.
I don't think so.
No, you're probably right. You're probably right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember- Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Mr. City Manager, I'm Terrence McNamara. I'm on the Board of Directors for the California Capital Air Show. With me is Nick Sikic, your appointee to the Board of Directors for the California Capital Air Show. We also have several members of our board and staff with us this evening, if they would stand and be recognized. We have retired Colonel Martinelli, Janice Downs, Darcy Brewer, our Executive Director as advertised, and Mark Sapoznick, all members of our board. So, we're here to, we're here to make our annual report to you about us, which is, I know you wait all year for this. So, the 12th Annual California Capital Air Show was fantastic, thanks in no small part to the City of Rancho Cordova. This thrilling and meaningful event was designed, choreographed, and narrated to deliver an action-packed weekend of family entertainment that honored our rich aviation heritage and encouraged young people to dream big and achieve greatness. And we have a small highlight reel from the weekend that we would like to show you.
I bet if you guys sat down, the people behind you could see it.
Even better.
The California Capital Air Show is a time-honored tradition for many across the region.
And the cool part is that the crew that's on there, they are just amazing to talk to. They'll share all the details of what they've brought in. They've talked about flying elephants on that airplane, tanks, all these are great things, so it really gets the kids excited to see it.
The California Capital Air Show is going on this weekend. You can see the coolest planes ever, like, oh, this one behind us, that is the Dragon Lady.
It's so much fun to be out here, planes flying over our head right now. We're looking for something new this weekend. This is the place to come. Look at all these neat little planes here. Look at off in the distance, the gigantic C-5.
It's arrival day at the California Capital Air Show, as planes and their pilots prepare for the two-day display of aviation in the air and on the ground.
We don't want them just to see these aircraft in a museum, but we want them to experience it.
The finest restored planes have come here to be judged by the Smithsonian Air and Space Museum.
Your name goes in the Smithsonian Air and Space Museum.
There's no finder honor, and to have your name attached to the Neil A. Armstrong trophy.
At the air show, she hopes to inspire more girls to pursue the same career, with the goal of one day being a pilot.
There's not a lot of girls in this field, so I hope that it pushes them to want to do something like this, because it's awesome and I love it.
Dedicated teacher just earned her student a field trip to the event. Rachel Voda was awarded the Capital Air Show Unsum Hero Award. She's a special education teacher at Charles Peck Elementary in Carmichael. The award is given to those who make their community a better place. A parent nominated Voda because she helped her son overcome social and communication barriers. As a winning recipient, Ms. Voda will have the opportunity to take a ride in one of the California Capital Air Show planes tonight.
That'd be fun.
And her students also get free tickets to the show here.
Oh, wow.
Shocking, more like terrifying. When you see the A-Leron's fall off the Jelly Belly plane, you think the show is over, but it's not.
I land on top of the truck, a pickup truck.
This weekend, thousands of spectators are expected to attend the big event. Rob Scratch Mitchell, number five pilot with the Patriots jet team, joins us live now from Mather Field with all of the details.
Right now, this is the great time to be at an air show. We're seeing all the vendors setting up. It's perfect environment right now. The sun's coming up. I think it's going to be a spectacular day.
Got a lot of stuff for kids out here to learn about STEM.
Teachers getting great ideas for hands-on learning.
The big planes, this is the first time I've ever seen an ATN Tankbuster in real life.
Michelle includes the Patriots jet team. And for the first time at any air show, the huge E-4B Doomsday Plane did a flyby.
What this is all about is inspiring the future generation to go into service in their country or pursue a career in aviation.
So, as part of this, in August, the city partnered with the California Army National Guard and the Air National Guard to deliver some top-secret boxes with 3,600 backpacks with free air show tickets, made possible by you. This was most successful, and it was the most successful and fun youth program that we've been a part of so far. The ticket redemption was huge, and nearly 3,000 Rancho Cordova students attended the air show for free this year. This was also, as noted in the video, our first year to host the National Aviation Heritage Invitational, which is a prestigious competition of rare and restored vintage aircraft, judged against criteria for the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum, which is my personal favorite Smithsonian. Attendees could cast their votes for the winners and see these aviation treasures up close. You saw, we got the E-4B, the, they call it the Doomsday Plane. It's actually the Night Watch aircraft. So, this is, it's one of only four of these command planes that fly around. They're a mobile command post, and that one generally transports the Secretary of Defense around, so I think that's pretty cool. We also had Steve Hinton, Bill Stein, and Kent Peach with their aerobatics, as noted in the video, and just a lot of cool, cool aircraft participating and on display.
And so, yeah, with that, we would just like to thank the council and Cyrus and staff very much. We're very grateful for the important role the City of Rancho Cordova played in making this year's air show just amazing. This nonprofit event would not take place each year without your generous donation and other sponsors as well. Your support has paved the way for these exciting events and meaningful year-round programming that showcases the science, technology, engineering, and math as the tools needed to accomplish great things and change the world. We thank you and look forward to partnering with you to bring many years of thrilling and inspiring air shows, including 2018's landmark celebration of Mather's 100-year of service to the community and our country. And so, with that, we would like to present to the council and Cyrus a 2017 commemorative poster signed by all the performers in the air show this year.
So, why don't we all step down to take a picture with the new gear?
So, I have, so I just, I just think we are so incredibly lucky to be able to showcase this asset that we have at Mather Field here. It was such a tragedy around here when it closed, and so you guys have really contributed to helping bring it back to, to honor what it, what it used to be and take it into the next century. I still can't get over the fact that we know the guy who flew the Doomsday Plane, and the U2 kept taking off over my house yesterday morning, which is, we just live in this incredibly cool place, and, and you guys are certainly a large part of that, and we'll always appreciate you for that.
I would just like to congratulate you guys on the, on the success with the education partnership. You know, as a nation, we are looking at a shortage of STEM-trained employees. Kids are not, young adults are not going into STEM careers at the rate that we really need them to, looking forward. This is an excellent opportunity, and I know it's always been a goal of the air show, to encourage kids to pursue STEM opportunities in their life and their education, and to see that number of kids engaged this year, I mean, that's approaching 25% of the kids in Rancho Cordova. Somewhere in that range of number, it might be a third, might be 20%, but somewhere in that, that is incredible. I mean, I don't think there's any other single activity that we could say we touched that many kids in an inspirational way. That is, that is truly remarkable. And I know last year, we sort of started that really intense activity, and this year with the helicopter, right over the top, tons of, you know, community comments, lots of media attention and social media buzz, so I can't wait to see how you top that next year. That's the challenge.
Can you get the Harrier to land at my house?
Work on horrible write.
Other comments from council? Well, thank you for coming, and again, it was, it was another great year, and we really enjoyed it, and thanks for all your support, and, yeah, thank you. So, with that, we will move on to Item 9.4 and call up Stacy Delaney. There she is. For Community Enhancement Fund check presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and guests. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. This evening, we are presenting ceremonial checks to several of the organizations that were approved for Community Enhancement Fund dollars in fiscal year 1718. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, children and youth, the arts, history, sports, quality of life, civic engagement, and public safety. Mayor and council members, please come down and join these groups as they receive their The first check being presented this evening is for the American River Grange #172 to complete the window replacement project at their building. The preservation of this historic building, listed on the United States Register of Historic Buildings, will bring it into a condition so that it can be used and enjoyed by the public for years to come. Bill Thomas, Marshall and Vicki Stewart, Jeff and Diane Goldman, Armando Ramil, and Shane Stewart are accepting the check for $6,708.
Somebody with a uniform needs to be in this. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Did you get the, did you get the?
The guys, the store, get all the.
What more do you want?
So, the reason why the Boy Scouts were there, if you're wondering the connection, the Boy Scouts meet at the Grange, and so they wanted to.
And have done a lot of work at the Grange.
Yes. And the Boy Scout troop is also going to bring back their troop trailer in the spring, when we have more daylight hours, so that people can see it. So, you'll have another chance in the spring. The second check is for the Cordova High School Cheer Program to purchase mats and to bring the Universal Cheerleading Association's camp to the school. This will provide new opportunities for competitive sports for Rancho Cordova students and improve the safety for participating students. Cheer Coach Ronnie Bean and members of the Lancer Cheer Team are accepting the check for $10,000. They want to do their picture first, and then they'll do their.
They're gonna.
They're gonna do their fight song.
On Cordova, on Cordova, fight Cordova hard. Pass the ball right down the line, boys, we are out to win. Ra, 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 we will always fight. Together, victory is our cry. Fight, Lancers, fight, 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 we'll win tonight. Hey, let's go, be great. Let's go, be great, fight, fight, fight.
Is it? That's your pickup?
Yeah.
And she was in the choir. Because she has plenty of time. She's, she's how bored you are.
And just so everybody knows, in case you didn't see it on social media or someplace else, Cordova is playing in the playoffs this Thursday evening against Vista del Lago. Can someone tell me the time?
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. So, as a former Lancer myself, I'm going to be there cheering them on, and hopefully many others can join.
Super.
First time in ages.
Exactly.
Yeah, first time in ages. This is good.
The third check is for Sierra Service Project to provide homes or small-scale home repairs and improvement projects for Rancho Cordova residents who are homeowners. The Neighborhood Beautification Program enhances the visual appeal of homes and neighborhoods and improves residential safety. McKenna Colbertson and Jake Bailey are accepting the check for $35,000. The fourth check is for Folsom-Cordova Unified School District to support two different programs, the Meet the Masters Program and the Artist-to-Go Program at elementary schools in Rancho Cordova. These programs provide enhanced arts education for Rancho Cordova students. Mindy Andres is accepting the check for $49,350.
Congratulations.
And the final check this evening is also being presented to Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, this time to purchase four eight-passenger vans to be used by Mills and Mitchell Middle Schools to transport students to extended learning activities, sporting events, and other student events. This is modeled after a successful program that started last year at Cordova High School and was also funded by the Community Enhancement Fund. This enables those two schools to provide enhanced educational opportunities and a safe, reliable means of transportation. Principal Peter Maroon is accepting the check for $155,648.
I know Peter has a cheer, because I saw him practice.
All that money.
Well, it's going to a really good cause. I'm going to stand next to you, guys.
Wait to see the cheer.
I got better to cheer for you. We got 150 kids doing cheerleading, 50 kids doing ballet, so I don't have to cheer for them.
This concludes tonight's check presentations.
Hey, she has stopped. She actually covered for me at the yoga class. Linda's going to do ballet. All right, thank you, Stacy and the rest of staff on more great news from the Community Enhancement Fund. So, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the time on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do you have any speaker cards for public comment?
Yes, I do. I have two. The first is Mida Keshat. The second is Carol Limbaga.
Good morning, or good, good morning. Good afternoon.
Close enough. There was a time change where all messed up. Don't worry about it.
Mayor, Council Manager. I'm taking this opportunity today to talk about marijuana since I noticed that the power people from the city of Sacramento aren't here. Maybe I can talk without being interrupted. First of all, I'm really discouraged, a little bit discouraged, that at our study sessions that seemed to be, except for the first session, we were sort of one-sided on our discussion on marijuana. It seemed like it was all the pros and we didn't have anybody to counteract the situation. There's a plethora of information out on environmental impact and crime and things that we really haven't discussed. And so tonight, I'm reminded of back in my parenting days when a kid would come with some cockamamie idea and say, well, I have to do it because everybody's doing it. Or I will be the laughingstock of the neighborhood if I don't do it. And all of these excuses and pretty soon the adult in the, in the household has to stand up and say, no, I don't think it's a good idea. So this is where I am today. I would like to see more information on the anti-marijuana group. And I hope that when it comes time to make a decision on that, you will have good reasons for which way you vote because you will be representing the residents of the city of Rancho Cordova. And I have not heard very many residents speak up for this, although when I'm talking to citizens in the community, they're aghast that you're even considering it. So that's my speech for tonight. I hope, I hope we will all come together with a reasonable conclusion to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker is Carol Limbaga.
Carol Limbaga, Rancho resident. This is an update regarding our bums and criminals. Subtitle, wait. We see homeless alleyways behind gas stations, abandoned cars, loitering, much trash. Our police tell them to move on, clean up. It all comes back in less than a month. A one-legged man living for months for all to see on Business Park Drive off Bradshaw, advised to stay there by our navigator so that he can find them when his name comes up. The back of Smart and Final, bums living on a couch, pallets and boxes, taking a year to resolve. The bike chop shop criminal businesses operating in Cordova Meadows Woods for years started a big fire. The camps north and south sides of the Sunrise Highway 50 ramps finally resolved. Our next door chats were getting hot regarding Safeway and Walmart from frustrated residents. I suggested they invite the police to read it as they are not allowed to otherwise. Thank God, council member David Sander got involved to cool it down. Our pop officers tell us to report each time we see something. Why do we have to repeat ourselves before their system kicks in? The areas we report are chronic. So, good news. We heard at our last pop meeting that our RCPG has received money to receive to set up a new program involving two police officers, part-time use of our navigator and support personnel to concentrate efforts on a new aggressive interaction with our chronic bums and criminals. Are our police, businesses and residents really that hogtied that we have to wait for another new program in order to be aggressive? But here's the bad news. Hiring, training and then implementation of this program is projected to begin sometime after the new year. What are we always asked to do? Wait, wait, wait. If you listen to Channel 14 SAC City and County meetings, you hear that they are sitting on a boatload of money, $98.4 million. But they can't spend it because no one wants housing in their backyard. This includes those empty dwellings all over downtown. A few years ago, the feds placed over 36,000 refugees into Arden Arcade. They found lots of places to live. They only needed fed money, food stamps, welfare money, Medi-Cal cards, DMV licenses and IDs. Last Rancho Cordova meeting, we heard the 2016-17 budget report. Excess money. Great. It will be put toward a long-term loan. We residents voted yes on Measure H funds because we thought we were going to get more safety. At our monthly pop meetings, when we voice our concerns, we are constantly reminded of how our police have to prioritize their calls due to the number of available officers.
Your time is up. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will. I suggest we fund two or three more police officers or fund our own PD. We need more than one town hall or community outreach meeting, but not just with one, but all of you council members, not just dumping on our pop officers all the time. This story about waiting and being dependent on SAC County is getting old. We need our own aggressive city policy or ordinance now before winter.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other speakers?
No, we do not.
With that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilman Gaywood.
Okay, so we did a lot of things. So the first thing I want to say is we were at the trunk or treat and I got to see all the really cool Star Wars people there. And that was totally worth it because you get to see Kylo Ren in real life and that's just awesome. And it was fun to give out tons of candy and look like Mario as kids came up to me and wanted me to make the Mario sound, Mario, and then jump up and down because I was dressed in gear and my kids were full of candy. The sad part is I got to go with Linda and see a tour of the St. John's program and, and what they're doing for women that have come from beaten relationships and their kids and seeing the amazing work they've done and then to hear that the county has pulled out over $700,000 out of, to their coffers. And I couldn't be more depressed to hear that a program that's working, we're defunding for the, the ability to fund a possible program that really has nothing in the future. And to see one that's actually 100% working to the point where I don't think they have any recidivism rate, once they put the, the woman and their family out, it, it breaks your heart. So I'm going to try to work with them, what I can do with the private sector to see if there's money we can actually put in there to try to, you know, employ those people to get more money in because that's just one of those things that doesn't need to be hurt because the county can't decide what it's doing with $96 million. Saw the groundbreaking of the San Juan Soccer Club. It's awesome to see soccer coming to Rancho in such great numbers and to see more business getting in because it's one of those things that it's going to generate so much business to the hotels and the, and the food industry in that region that it's just, it's good to see more businesses tilting up. Saw a workflow, which is basically a African-American owned business that's starting up to house entrepreneurs and help them kind of put the ideas together. And to see one of those pop up over in Fight Circle is just amazing. I got to be a guest speaker at the Vins and I got to hear their concerns. There, there actually is some troubling things that they're bringing up, how people are starting not to feel safe in the neighborhood and what we can do about that. Hopefully the, the Cyrus has planned with the community to bring in the two new officers. But we're actually having an issue. The parks, I know we're going to discuss a tree ordinance, but a lot of the business owners are cutting down their trees because they're scared of the homeless encampments. So they're fixed to us not being able to deal with the homeless problem is to get rid of the trees. And so that's their new solution. And I was like, that's a terrible solution, guys. I was like, I'd rather you work with us before you start cutting down your trees, especially 30, 40, 50-year-old trees. And they're like, well, if we don't see a solution, then we're gonna... And that's just one of those things we need to address. And the last thing was a very cool speech by our own mayor at the State of the City. It was very exciting to see everyone there and, you know, growth and seeing lots of ums in Donald's speech. No, I'm just joking. It was a good speech, man.
Perfume.
Yes. It was good to see what is happening in our city and I really think we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
David, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm going to report first on football because for the second year in a row, the Cordova Lancers football team has won their conference and is into the playoffs. So it's this Thursday, as we heard from the cheerleaders, at, against, versus Vista de Lago Thursday night, 7:00 PM. There's a lot of excitement at these games. It's really neat to see. It's kind of like...
Where is it?
Vista de Lago.
No, no, no. I mean, are they playing up there or are they playing down there?
They're playing against them at, at that location. They actually thought the committee could have decided to put it at Cordova, but for some reason chose Vista over the Cordova location. We were hoping we would be a home host because our record has been that good over two years. But anyway, we're playing up there. I intend to be there, but I've got a, a couple of conflicting meetings. So we've had a good presence from City Hall at those games and of course, that team and the cheerleaders that are there and the band that is there have all benefited from community enhancement funds from this city. And I just think it's good if we're there to sort of reinforce that we're with them, they're with us, they're part of us, they're doing great stuff. Thank the kids for their, for their efforts. They like it. It's good, it's good all the way around. So if you get a chance, try to, try to make it. State of the City, Mr. Mayor, congratulations. Great job there. It's amazing to me how far that event has come since this Cordova Community Council started at, hush, I don't know, maybe eight years ago, six years ago, somewhere in there. But it's really developed so nice that now we're giving things away. And it really held it...
We gave it to Lee, but yeah.
Yeah, well, that was, yeah, that was interesting. The city did, by the way, yeah.
We tried, we tried to give it to two other people. They had left, so.
Oh, my gosh. That was funny. I think it'll be re-gifted is what'll happen there. I attended the Cordova Community Council Retreat and the neat thing there that was in common with the State of the City was this discussion about an $8 million donation to the Cordova Community Council. And if you think about the innovative steps we've taken in partnership with that organization over a decade and all the resources we've made available them, all the partnerships we have accomplished with them, all the goals we've met and set for them, and all, if you sum up all those resources, it probably doesn't add up to $8 million. But yet because of all that good activity, this is now an $8 million benefit perhaps to our community. It's like we all won. We all won something with that donation. So it just sort of lifts Rancho Cordova and I think it really validates the unique aspects of that partnership. And we talked a little bit about that at State of the City, but I just thought that was so right on target for, it's almost like typical of what we see happening in Rancho Cordova with our ambitions towards these unique partnerships. They will, they're going to have a tough decision in figuring out how to utilize that property. They are being, right now flooded with ideas, as you can imagine, people wanting to host events there, all kinds of, all kinds of stuff, from the absurd to the really funny to the perhaps, you know, quite profitable. So it'll be interesting to see how they can utilize that property in the, in the near term. I, of course, chair the Secog Transportation Committee and last meeting, last Thursday, we talked about the Bakersfield, I don't know how many people here are familiar with this, but the Bakersfield Homeless Program in which they take higher functioning homeless individuals in Bakersfield, they get money from Caltrans, they get money from, you know, those call boxes along the freeway. There's a funding mechanism that funds those call boxes. No one uses them anymore or almost no one uses them because cell phones are everywhere. They're kind of out of date. But the revenue source is still there and in Bakersfield, they took that revenue, they took Caltrans revenue, they took revenue that the city and county were spending on cleanups like trash cleanups, pickups on different roads and folded it all into this homeless program that's run by a nonprofit. And the result is all the agencies save money and get more stuff picked up. And rather than spending it on contractors or something else, you're helping the homeless and making funds available, which of course, we know are very challenging to find in order to try to get people jobs and get them a little bit of work experience. So it's a real win-win. And I think Secog is going to be pursuing sort of the details of that with Caltrans and with some of the larger homeless service providers like St. John's that you just mentioned a few minutes ago and see if someone is interested in sort of picking up the other part of that here. But I think it would be particularly applicable to Rancho Cordova and Highway 50 if we had a means of having regular crews pick up the litter and trash we see along Highway 50.
Is this similar to the Albuquerque model? Is it Albuquerque or Santa Fe? There, there's a New Mexico...
There is one, isn't there?
...mayor that...
Yeah.
I gotta look it up. He did a TED Talk a while back that I listened to.
Yeah, I have heard something about that.
I'm gonna say Albuquerque is doing it.
But the, the Bakersfield one, won a, an award from the League of California Cities and it was profiled, profiled at one of their meetings. It's a really, really neat idea. And the funniest part of that presentation, I should actually share it with you, they showed a scene and it said, this is Baghdad and you saw this trash by a road. This is Bakersfield and it was all this trash by a road and they looked identical. The trash problem there was that bad. And frankly, we're not in that situation nor do we want to approach that situation. This might be a really great way to, to do something positive.
Yeah, but check out, check out the off-ramp at Zinfandel.
There, we have our challenge spots, yes. Definitely have our challenge spots. And, you know, being able to deal with those in a cheaper way. The other thing they were doing is Bakersfield is they were hiring prison crews to pick up the trash. And of course, then you have to pay the supervising officers and the transportation, I mean, all, all sorts of extra cost. SAC County in a given year spends about $4 million on sheriff's work crews. And so the thought was, what if that got diverted a slightly different direction? How far would it go in this program? So that's one of the things that's, that's being looked at. And finally, I want to join my colleague in congratulating San Juan Soccer Club on that, that expansion. That's a neat thing to have in our community. Will be a nice boost for our travel and tourism related businesses. That's my report.
Thank you, David. Bob?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I want to compliment Linda. On this last Saturday, we had a conversation about Vietnam War. We had four Vietnam War veterans. There were some people there in the audience who probably could have done just as well because they all had a story to tell. But the ones that were there did a fantastic job. Michael Connor, for one, was a prisoner of war for five years. And there's some other things that were said, but those were able to come and we were able to give them the lapel pins to those. And there are some others who weren't there, but they will be passed on to them too. But the lapel pins for the Vietnam War veterans, that's phenomenal program. And as I said in the past, they're just, people who haven't heard it, that this will continue until November the 11th, 2025. They are trying to reach as many of the Vietnam War veterans as possible. There are still about 11, excuse me, 7 million. And from what the VA said, we're losing about 500 plus a day. So there are quite a few that are, we're, we're losing, but we're trying to reach as many as we can. I know there's like between 500 and 600,000, World War II veterans left. So that's something to thank them for all they've done, what they're continuing to do. The community council, one of the things they've done now that they didn't do in the past, which has been very helpful, is helping our Memorial Day and Veterans Day Committee. They're doing some wonderful things with the program, with helping along that line. And then this coming November, the 11th, this Saturday, will be Veterans Day. So we'll be having a lot of people there and we're honoring the veterans for the last 100 years. Next year, it's going to be, everyone's going to be working, I think, on something about Rancho Cordova and Mather for 100 years. So that's going to be something we're looking forward to also. So there are many things that are going on this, this decade, I guess, but anyway, we've got quite a bit going on right now. 100 years with veterans in World War I, all the way to today, and then the 100 years for Mather next year. So many things to look forward to. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, so this has been a busy few weeks. There was one evening where we had three ribbon cuttings all at once and ran from place to place, accompanying the Chamber of Commerce, visited Fox Family HVAC. So if anybody needs heating and air conditioning services, these people are right here in town. They are local, they're small, they've been here a long time, and they're eager to serve you. Smiles Dentist, which is one of the new people down at the Rayleigh Center, and then another celebration of street improvements, thanks to our Community Enhancement Fund and Albert's team for managing those improvements over at Taylor Park. Yes, Garrett's right. The tour of St. John's facility was eye-opening and moving, and the stories that a couple of the ladies who accompanied us told about where they had been and where they are now in their lives were really inspirational, and there's no question that they are doing something very good over there. And we do, we need more of that. There's, you know, everybody talks about starting over again. Garrett has a really good point. Why start over a new program that takes time and effort to ramp up when you have something that's already a proven model, that's been working for a long time? We do congratulate San Juan Soccer. They looked all over, and they found the best place they could find, right here in Rancho Cordova. Regional Transit continues to expand its efforts to serve the communities, and both at the RT Board, as well as in meetings with the general manager, Henry Lee, we heard about the fact that they are finally going after different pots of money that can be used for a variety of improvements and expansions. For instance, the double tracking to Folsom, which is really important for the long-term function of light rail, ways in which to expand our community bus service, like the Cordovan, ways in which to expand regular bus routes here in Rancho Cordova, looking at constructing maintenance facilities here in Rancho Cordova. So we have, we need our economic development department to put their thinking caps on about good sites. And in keeping with Veterans Day, it's important to know that on Saturday, Veterans Day, Regional Transit will be offering free rides to all the veterans and their families. Veterans are asked to, active-duty veterans are asked to provide their military ID, and families are asked to provide their standard DOD-issued identification card, and your ride is free. At the County Two-by-Two, Donald and Cyrus and staff, and I heard a lot about the county's homeless programs, and here again, the, you know, the irony is that, yes, they're thinking, they're thinking about starting new programs again, when there really are a few that work well. But interestingly, and I wish the ladies had stayed, interestingly, their take on what the B reported as 68 million or 98 million or some enormous amount of money is completely different from the way in which the B reported it. And so we'll see what happens. They, on a bright note, they are SETA. The Employment and Training Agency is consolidating job training, both at Mather Community Campus and at the Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership workforce training building over at Walnut Wood School. And they're renewing their lease for the Mather Community Campus with the VOA. And so even though HUD is not going to fund transitional housing anymore, the money to fund the Mather Community Campus is coming out of the county's general fund. And it's just another one of those projects that got cut, and everybody's scrambling to find additional dollars to continue it. We do congratulate Donald on a successful State of the City address, and we went to the State of the County address on Friday, which featured airports, mostly international, but also talked about Mather. Thank you to Bob and to Maria and our facilities team for supporting the veterans event on Saturday. You all have a copy of the biographies of the four people who were on the panel. Each one brought a different perspective on their time in Vietnam, and we want, we're thinking we would like to do this again in the springtime, because there were so many people who said they could have come and didn't make it, and the opportunity for people to come and share their stories is really a part of the whole process of welcoming these people home, the way they didn't get it before. And Bob tells me that the organization that we joined back in 2013 to take this look back at Vietnam has actually extended its life expectancy from the initial five years, which would have sunsetted this year, out to 2025. And so it enables us to continue to be able to honor our Vietnam veterans here in, at least here in Rancho Cordova. And finally, and again, talking about veterans, we need to close our meeting tonight in honor of several people, all of whom, I think, were veterans. A gentleman I worked with at Aerojet 30 years ago, Ken Collins, who's one of the vice presidents of their strategics, I believe Ken was vice president of strategics. A gentleman named James Arnold, Jim Arnold, who retired from the Air Force and went to work for the Rancho Cordova Post Office for another 30 or 40 years. Jim Emerson, who, in those two years that I served on the board at Metro Fire, was a retired, I mean, was the fire chief at that point in time, and I know our fire marshal is here, and we want to close in Jim's memory. And then finally, dear Dale Steelman, another veteran and longtime resident, when you read all of the information on Facebook about the Cordova Villa neighborhood, and the Steelmans lived there, when all these people who were growing up in Cordova Villa lived there. Josie was with the school district in a variety of capacities, including having served on the Folsom-Cordova School Board, and her husband Dale was just kind of everything in youth sports in Rancho Cordova. And he passed away recently, and there was a memorial, a celebration of his life, really. When you look at the photographs on Facebook, it was truly a celebration of his life. So we want to close our meeting tonight in honor of those four people.
Thank you. We will. So I had to go ahead in my agenda here, write down all of the names that Linda was...
No, it's, I can... Do you need me to write them down?
No, I can. So this is in no particular order, because some of these were this past week, some of them were the week before. But I had the opportunity to speak on a panel at the Regional Housing Summit, put on by the Sacramento Housing Alliance. Mainly, it was facilitated by Erica Smith, I believe, from the Sacramento Bee. I believe really the focus was intended to be on homelessness, and it had Donna Toly and Daryl Steinberg there, and myself, and Jeff Harris from District 4, 3, down town. Most of my comments are really around, I think even, David, what you were talking about was that population that's right on the edge of being homeless or not, you know, living in their car, and the fact that those individuals probably have a higher rate of, you know, mental issues and substance abuse and things like that. But if you keep them housed, you usually keep some of those issues at bay. And so focusing on how you keep those people a little bit more stable or in the market was really what I think I spent my time talking about more, was if we can create sustainable, affordable housing to keep these people housed, we're probably not going to see them, our chronic inebriates, three years later and things like that. But it was an interesting conversation. I don't think anyone's still here from ILTV, and I know we talked about it in the other room, but again, this was their third trunk or treat. It was enormous. We handed out, my son and I handed out 180 full-size candy bars, and then switched over to the small stuff and still handed out probably another hundred or so treats. And so it was just, it was very well-attended. It was something to see. To see, to see a neighborhood that really, what that group was born out of was crisis and crime that brought them together. And I remember thinking that, you know, I fielded a handful of emails, you know, having been the school board member there, I don't know if I get more emails than most from that neighborhood, but I got a lot during that time when this group was getting together to say, "We need a neighborhood watch." And it's like, well, let's just get you together, and then you decide what you want to do with it. And to look a couple of years later at the dynamic and what they've really done with that neighborhood and what those people have done is really exciting. I want to thank Maria and Ashley and everyone that was involved in helping make State of the City a great night. The most important thing, if anything, to learn about that, has nothing to do with me giving a speech, it's the fact that there's a lot of great things to talk about in this city. There's a lot of things to be proud about, and I can tell you that the list of stuff that we were going to talk about was twice as long. We just didn't really have that much time, and we didn't want people to have to sit there that long. But we, you know, I could have talked another 20 minutes on just all of the accomplishments that we had. I was able to go over to Peter J. Shields and speak at two different assemblies, and then speak on a conference call to Marathon Kids and their headquarters in Austin. So this is a program where students commit to, during the year, running three marathons over a course of the school year. And so they get, they get hours tracked by their teachers, then the teachers commit to running three marathons throughout the year in total. So they get 10 minutes, 15 minutes a chunk, so they're not running three, four, all these kids aren't signed up for CIM or anything. But it's really impressive, and, you know, to be this early in the year, there were some kids that had already run 75 miles for the year. There were third graders that had run 35 miles for the year already, which is a really impressive program. And I think that, it's one of those programs that I really see is something that we might want to make kind of a signature program for Rancho Cordova around being healthy and our Moving With the Mayor initiative or other things like that, if that's something that other mayors can choose to continue. But it's 15 bucks a student to run this program, and there's incentive programs for them as they hit their different milestones. But it's a really, really fantastic program that this one teacher, Mr. T., I'll remember that forever, runs, and it was just, it was very, very impressive, and the principals were really into it, and the superintendent and everybody else. There wasn't much to really report on it. Air Quality Management District, they officially announced and did the presentation that we've reached our 10-year goal of particulate matter a year early. So our air is at the standard that it's supposed to be for next year, this year.
Finally.
Yeah. Yeah, so it took a while, and, you know, keep praying for rain, because that keeps our air nice and clean usually. Bob, did you have some?
No, I was just going to say, when I was on the board for the air quality, it took about three years for the federal government to say, "Oh, well, I guess actually the forest fires did have something to do with the air quality."
We do get some special exemptions for that, but yeah. But our program around Check Before You Burn, I guess that is one thing to remind everybody, we are now in the Check Before You Burn time period of the year, which, when I had a wood fireplace, my wife hated that I was on the air district board. But, you know, make sure that you're checking, you can get a fine for that. We're one of the only counties that does that, but it does lead to cleaner air and less childhood asthma and a lot of other important things. I didn't get to go to all of those ribbon cuttings, but I did go over to the Smiles Dentistry that day, but then I had to go be on daddy duty after that. But congratulations to the chamber and everybody else in being so active and planning all those things on the same day, so I know it's not your fault.
They didn't do it.
I know. I also attended an event called Lights On After School, and this was held at Sunrise Elementary, but I do believe there were three other ones in the city that day. This is the after-school program that my son attends, so we went over and did it. And so this was a national recognition of after-school programs across the country on that night, that they're supposed to light up schools and stay open for their community. And so they, they had all kinds of different educational stations and things like that for families, and they bought pizzas and had, I want to say there was probably about 50 families that showed up to the one that I was at. Also got to attend, Bob, I think you were there, for the Sunrise 10th anniversary. And I point out, not just because my son goes there, but the principal did say, got up before he introduced me, and said that Rancho Cordova is the most progressive city when it comes to educational support and educational partnership that he has ever witnessed in his entire career. So that's a heck of a quote, and I thought I might as well at least say that on TV and have it recorded. So, and I think we've also heard the superintendent say, and hopefully we're not getting him in trouble with Elk Grove or somebody else, but the superintendent of Elk Grove has said that he, that we are the best partner that he has of any government agency that he works with. So kudos to city staff and everybody else for getting us to that point when it comes to Elk Grove Unified or SAC City or Folsom-Cordova, because I think our relationships, especially in the last couple of years with our educational roundtable, has really improved and allowed us to do a lot more than I think we could have in the past. I do want to recognize Mayor Steinberg. For those of you who weren't aware, SAC City Unified came up with an agreement on their contract today. That's very important to the thousands of kids that attend SAC City Unified schools that are in our city. It was actually about 10 years ago, and I was actually reading the story to remind myself, when Mayor Steinberg was an assembly member, that he actually negotiated and headed off a strike at that time as well. So in the last 10 years, Mayor Steinberg has been in the middle of saving the school district and the, the teachers' union and the administration from imminent strike. We were, we were, we were two days away from having strikes. So kudos to him and the rest of the team over at SAC City Unified for getting that figured out so that our kids aren't missing school and parents aren't figuring out what they're going to do with their kids. And I just wanted to say, good luck to Cordova High. I will be at a conference out of town, unfortunately, or I would absolutely be there, but I drive out on Wednesday morning to Monterey for a housing conference. But congratulations to all of them, and, you know, we shouldn't take credit, because obviously this is a lot of hard work, but I will say, it's really interesting that we buy new helmets that have these cool sensors in them to tell the kids whether or not they've gotten a concussion or gotten hurt. I'm thinking this has something to do with mom allowing more kids to go and play football and feeling a little more comfortable about, our kids are going to be safe here comparatively to some other schools that they may be at. And I'm still pretty sure that it's just us and the city and Davis High are the only schools that have this program. And right after we implement it, we win a league championship and we win another one the next year. I don't think that's an accident. I think it's got to at least be part of what's going on here. So I think it's really cool that we're seeing this kind of success and that it's following a pretty major investment that we made as a city. And obviously, we didn't do it just so that they win games, but it's really cool that they did. So with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. Just to build on the theme of education and the partnerships, we also had a meeting, a two-by-two meeting with Folsom-Cordova Unified School District last week. And once again, I think, based on the discussions we hear and the caliber of the conversations that we have with both the elected and the staff at the school district, we can say that a lot of good things are happening. We have a great partnership, and I'm really hopeful about many accomplishments that we can make together in the field of education. I also wanted to acknowledge the State of the City address, a wonderful event, and I also would like to take the time to acknowledge the staff. We had representation just about from every part of the organization. We had a large presence of staff, with setting up the booth, with supporting the council behind the scenes, also being available to assist the public and the residents who attended, and really wanted to give a heartfelt thanks to all staff. We also distributed the annual Community Enhancement Fund report, and this has received, already received good feedback on that report, and that's another good work by our staff. The only other thing I wanted to point out, we had, we really put a lot of work in creating a positive work culture here, and last Tuesday on Halloween Day, we managed to have a fun day. We had our partners from the Chamber of Commerce to Cordova Community Council, along with city staff. We managed to all make fools of ourselves and have a great time, and this really was just a fun event, another thing that we do to promote the relationships, the camaraderie, and the good work.
Facilities actually outdid themselves in creating a haunted house.
Yes. And if you haven't seen the haunted house, please, hopefully you can make it next year. It is, it is a lot of good work. Lastly, I think it's, Stacy Kelly and myself had a conversation, had a conference call with the Office of the Sacramento County Voter Registration, and they are in the process of implementing the, what they call the Voters' Choice Act. And they have given us some information, and we feel it would be, given the changes that we will see in the voting process, that we would... we will see in the voting process, that we would like to bring them here to present to us as far as the changes that we're contemplating and the work that we will be doing to support them. So that, we hope Stacy may hopefully in the next month or so be able to bring them before the council.
December.
That's a really good idea. Even the libraries involved, the Rancho Cordova library will be one of the, whatever they're calling it, the voter drop-off areas.
Centers, yeah.
Yeah.
Not to be confused with what they did on House of Cards, in case you watch that show.
Some of us don't watch House of Cards.
That's exactly what they called them, unfortunately.
I have no idea.
And not in a good way, if you watch the show.
Okay.
Okay.
Since I haven't watched the show, I probably have no frame of reference.
Have no clue.
That would be very helpful, I think, knowing what changes are coming next year. I think it'd be great.
So the only thing, the only thing, I forgot to add that one of the veterans who came and talked on Saturday had been sending me reams of photographs. And so I put them together into a collage and it's over here on the board so that you can see the kind of different terrain and different kinds of experiences that they had. All of, everybody who came brought some sort of a display board. They take these things around with them to, you know, to reunions and whatnot to share with people. And so that was just another, we didn't just have to listen to them talk about their experiences. They also could show photographs from that era, so.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I was also informed that this November's speaker at the chamber luncheon will be the new, our new superintendent, Sarah, from Falls Cordova will be the speaker, so.
Collegiate.
Collegiate, thank you. So please don't miss it, if you can. So with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar item. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For the items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state their name and community of residence. Do we have any speaker cards for the consent calendar?
No, I do not.
Okay. Do we have any items to be pulled?
I'd like to pull 13.3 to ask, to actually get some consideration. I'd like to ask David, since he sits on the National League of Cities, is the only guy, I'm not really familiar with Joe. I know, I think he was a senator in the 70s, but that's about it, so I won't.
No. And this is, well, let's discuss the item after we do it. But to just clarify, this is, you're saying National League of Cities, this is our state law contract?
Right, right. But I think you can also get a, you can use the National League of Cities to do the same thing. So I just want to make sure we're getting our.
Okay. So I will move approval of items 13.1, 2, and 4.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. So 13.3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the Legislative Advocacy and Governmental Affairs contract with Joe A. Gonzalez and Sons. I don't see Maria here who normally handles this contract. So let, why don't you go ahead and state the question?
I was going to ask David because he does a lot when it comes to legislative for our city. And so I know, I didn't know if he wanted to, you know, the benefits of this gentleman because I'm not aware of him, or is it something like, I know National League of Cities has something where they bind all the cities together is, and so I want to know what your opinion was on this.
And Ashley, isn't Joe just state?
Just state of California.
Yeah, he's not national.
Yeah, Len Simon would be our federal.
Len Simon for our national representative.
David, I don't know if you wanted to address, but normally, and this is a newer contract for us, but we have, we've always had, we've had a federal lobbyist for a long time. We secured this contract within the year to represent our city. Now, they represent other cities, but they specialize in representing cities at the state level. And so they, they're a contract lobbyist that represents selected cities. League of California Cities, National League of Cities, they do advocate for cities in general, but most cities our size or bigger usually have our own for our own needs and our own special focuses.
Because something really specific will come up, or maybe an opportunity or something we need to finesse carefully that the league wouldn't be able to handle for us, but our own lobbyists could. And Maria might even have examples in the past year of things that have come up.
I do. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Maria Neestad with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. I understand there's some questions about the contact with Gonzalez and Sons. So as Councilmember Sander was indicating, they do help us with specialized issues, for example with Mather Veterans Village. We were seeking some bridge funding and they were able to identify a program through the Department of Finance that we would qualify for. And they advocated on our behalf and we were able to secure those funds.
Okay. Is that the, is, okay. So that, all right.
Yeah. Beyond just, I think even when you, when you look at the association, so League of Cities or National League of Cities, California League of Cities or National League of Cities, they're mainly going to focus on legislative things that are going through. And there's a lot of times that it's administrative, it's a regulatory issue, it's this department over here that already has the money that we're trying to get a conversation or a meeting with or things like that, that having your own lobbyist that's worried about you is more effective.
This is our first year having them? Or we, you said it was our first year doing one with the state?
With Gonzalez?
Three, maybe?
Yeah, no, this is the first year.
This is the first year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, David, do they do Secog then? Is that why I know them?
Or do they do RT?
Yes.
There you go.
RT.
Maybe that's what it is.
I think it's RT.
They also, they represent other cities around here too. I mean, they specialize mainly in local governments and things like that. And so, but it was really a contract that was, was brought on when, after Maria was hired. Because I think we've always had pretty good representation from Simon and Company at the federal level, and then we just worked through the California League of Cities. And I think, to me, this is more effective. The league is great, but there are times that we need someone just focused on us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just expand on that discussion, we have had a federal lobbyist almost from the beginning of the cityhood. Len Simon and Company has been the federal lobbyist. It's been only recently that we felt, given many of the legislations and also funding opportunities that we may have at the state level, that we needed a state lobbyist. And that's the work that we, the company that we have contracted with. There was a point though, and I'm trying to remember about 2006 or '07, when we contemplated on bringing somebody at the state level and we even had them on a trial basis, but that contract did not last very long. Judging by the work that Gonzalez has done so far, I think there's definitely great value in the work they do. It's, the work and the effort that they put into this is very targeted. It's not generic and broad the way that the League of California Cities basically approaches the issues. It's more focused on what could possibly, a potential bill or potential legislation, how it could impact the city of Rancho Cordova specifically. And that's the level of input and expertise that they can provide for us.
A good example would be, David, I think you were the one who explained it, and it happened in California League of Cities where a handful of city council members were hitting up and talking about how all these cities are out there cutting their own local sales tax deals with these companies to move their processing there. And then finally, one mayor stood up and said, "Hey, hey, you're, you know, that's our entire business model, is stealing your tax money," right? And so the league isn't necessarily going to weigh in on something that half of them like it and half of them don't. So having our own representation for defending against these cities that are basically stealing tax dollars from other cities, depending on if you're on the stealing end or the receiving end, you have a different opinion. That's why it's really good to have your own representation for these things.
So I will move approval of item 13.3.
I would second that.
Did you get all your questions answered?
I got all my questions answered.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. So with that, we have no consent public hearing items and we have no public hearing items, so we will move on to regular calendar items. And our first is the affirmation of Mather Veterans Village Phase II use permit for the community-based transitional housing program. Stefan.
Can I move approval?
Second.
Can you at least let him cover a little bit?
Aye.
I think you have full support, but let's go ahead and.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, one slide.
Go back to the one slide.
We're all very supportive, but.
Two short slides.
He doesn't get in front of the council. Let's give him, let's give him his time.
Yeah, and speaking of Joe Gonzalez.
Joe Gonzalez is pretty helpful in this one.
I know.
This is the one Maria was talking about, that he.
At the school, we do it all the time. Go ahead.
Identified. Okay.
Briefly, but effective. Go ahead.
So we applied for money in July. And in October, we got it. We got, we got the award. Now to receive, to actually get the money into our account, they are requesting that we affirm the results with a resolution saying that Mather Veterans Village Phase II is allowed to operate for at least 10 years as a transitional housing facility.
Right.
Which we've already approved as a design review.
And we'll introduce you as Stefan Heisler.
Oh, excuse me.
It's okay. You got to, yeah.
We cut him off right there. You're doing fine.
So this resolution.
We own this, the building in 99-year lease, I think, with the county, so 10 years is good, yeah.
So this resolution will authorize V R C A to operate a transitional shelter for 10 years. It will require them to meet the other requirements of Government Code Section 30035.2 for resident services and proper licensure, and it will allow the city to receive the $2 million grant. So staff recommends that council adopt Resolution 134-2017.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
All the questions. Do we have, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
If I could vote twice, I would, but I'll just vote aye. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And with that, I don't think you're going anywhere because the, item 16.2 is First Amendment to the Veterans Village Phase II Disposition Development and Loan Agreement. Do you have any more of a presentation or that was it?
No, I've got more.
Okay, go ahead.
Aye.
Okay, okay, okay. I will just say, and I don't know if on your other board, your bodies, I've served somewhere where we would just make motions during the middle of staff presentation, and some of these people work very hard on their presentations and then they never see the light of day. I hope we never become that body.
No, but we also don't want him to expend a lot of work when it's a done deal. So we'll move approval.
Aye.
Wait, let me introduce myself first.
Go ahead and do it anyway, because you know, see what you've got.
So I have a motion, but go ahead and do the staff presentation.
All right. Stefan Heisler. So this, this one starts similarly. We applied for money in July 2017. The Community-Based Transitional Housing Grant Program has a goal to provide transitional housing for the ex offender population, which they define as those who have one or more felony or misdemeanor convictions. We found already in, through the Veteran Resource Centers of America's other programs, that there is a large correlation between homeless veteran population and those who have such records, approximately 40%. So in our resolution that allowed the staff to apply for this grant funding, we required changes to the DDLA if we were awarded to include the target population goal licensure requirements and services provision. So the proposed changes to the DDLA follows. We will add a 40% goal for people who have been released from state prison or county jail after serving one or more felony or misdemeanor convictions. We'll add requirements to provide services to ex offender residents and the program will be in valid possession of licenses. Also add language regarding how and for what activities these grant funds will be used for. And then also, we will add the annual reporting requirements that meet the community-based transitional housing grant requirements. So approval of this resolution will allow city manager to execute the amended DDLA, including the proposed changes. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 135-2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, but I think the city manager did want to make a few comments.
Council, I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the great work that Mr. Heiser has done. This was after Mr. Florrie retired from disposition. We were very interested to pursue the work that we had begun on Mather Veterans Village and be sure that phases two and three get built. So with this, with this funding, the funding mechanisms in place and with the approval of the DDL, the amendment to the development agreement, we are much, much closer to this. We have some additional funding needs and we hope to have a resolution on some of the outstanding funds by the middle of this month. And once that has been approved, we should be able to take the next phases to construction in spring of 2018. With that, I once again thank you, Stefan, for the great work you've done, and this is getting much, much closer to reality.
Mayor, before there's a motion, I would like to state that there's no public speaker cards.
Thank you very much.
Move approval.
I think I already, I think I already have my motion and my second, if you've got them written down. So that will have a roll call, please.
Could we state the motion or the first and the second again, please?
Budge and McGarvey.
Thank you. Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 16.4, resolution setting the 2018 city council meeting calendar.
We're skipping 3.
Who, did I skip one? I'm sorry. You're right. 16.3. I'm sorry, thank you.
The only big thing on the agenda tonight.
I know, right? Presentation of Proposed Updated Ordinance Regarding the City Trees Preservation Ordinance. My apologies.
Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And this evening, I'm going to present to you an update on the proposed tree preservation ordinance. The goals of the meeting are to review the current code, summarize the proposed code, provide our staff recommendation, and request council input. Some background and work performed to date, the city adopted our current code upon incorporation. We've reviewed comparable codes, including City of Sacramento, Davis, and the county and others. We have consulted with our city attorney's office and also our code enforcement group. We've performed community outreach and we held a council workshop on April 25. And the, based on our work performed to date, there are some shortcomings with our current ordinance, and the proposed ordinance is intended to address those. And also, at the April 25 workshop, council directed staff to provide more protection for trees within Rancho Cordova than is currently provided by the, by our code. There are three key sections to the current code. 1904 Regulations, which is largely protecting public trees. 1908 Dutch Elm Disease Control, which addresses a very specific disease. The main focus of this evening's conversation is 1912 Tree Preservation and Protection, which deals largely with private trees, residential, commercial, et cetera. So our, the current code protects all public trees in right-of-way. There's strong protection for public trees. On for residential and commercial trees, the current code only protects four varieties of native oaks. And on for residential lots less than 10,000 square feet, which is a little bit less than a quarter of an acre, those lots are exempt from the ordinance. Also protected are trees planted as part of a discretionary permit and landmark inherited trees.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
The trees that are growing and expanding and blocking the view of the Welcome to Rancho Cordova panel that's, as you come into Rancho Cordova across the river, on the right side of Sunrise Boulevard, is that a protected tree where it can't be pruned or anything like that, so you can actually see what's up there? I know that one of the leadership classes used that to update it and make it accurate, and now it's getting to the point where you can't really see it. Is there some way we can do, something to do with those trees? I think some of them are protected, or all of them, not sure. But is that something that can be done?
Either way, we should be able to trim those. I believe those may be in the parkway, so we may have to work with the parkway.
That's the problem. They're all in the parkway, and they're all oak trees.
Well, there's... Okay, good, then let's see if we can work with them and get some help on that, because I think it's a shame that the work that was done by that leadership class and the Welcome to Rancho Cordova in showing some of our wonderful organizations can't be seen when people come in.
Thank you, we'll coordinate with them and do whatever's possible. There are some exemptions to the code, as I mentioned. Residential lots smaller than about a quarter acre, a little less than a quarter acre exempt, and also trees other than native oaks that are also not protected by the current code. And that has been a challenge in some cases. On some of the commercial properties, we've had some significant removals in the past. Just because a permit is required to protect, to trim or remove a tree doesn't mean that it cannot be removed. There are certain reasons that a permit for removal is issued, and that is based on the tree condition. Perhaps it's dead, dying, or diseased, age of the tree, or risk to structures. Some of the properties of the current code, relatively low regulation, there have been some challenges with tree removers, removals on commercial properties. We've heard some concern from residents with regard to tree topping and stumps, and there are limited repercussions for violations in the current code. As we compare the different ordinances that we've looked at, just to summarize, in City of Rancho Cordova, all public trees are protected. On residential lots, oaks larger than six inches are protected, but only if the lot is larger than 10,000 square feet. So that rules out most of the lots in Rancho Cordova. And then for commercial properties, native oaks larger than six inches are protected. In contrast, City of Sacramento has slightly greater protection. The same for public trees. They protect a handful of native trees over 12 inches diameter, and then they protect all trees over 32 inches diameter on commercial, on, excuse me, on single-family residential and duplex. On commercial properties, they provide a slightly higher level of protection. They reduce that to 24 inches diameter and larger are protected on commercial. Slightly greater level of protection on Davis, on residential, five-inch diameter if associated with a building permit for residential, and then commercial, they've named 68 varieties, and they protect five-inch diameter and larger.
How many arborists do you need to keep track of 68 varieties within your city?
I don't know what their staff is, but I would imagine it'd be a combination of their staff, consultants, and the arborists bringing the permits to them. And it's also, it lists specifically 68, but it's not limited to those 68. So it could be more encompassing than that. As we went through these numbers, looking at 32 inches, 24 inches, 12 inches, 6 inches, 5 inches, the immediate question that came to us is, what does this mean for Rancho Cordova? And so what we did was, we selected representative locations around the city. A section of White Rock Road east of Prospect Park, Sunrise Boulevard north of Sun Center, and Folsom Boulevard near Coloma, west of Coloma Road. We measured it, and also at City Hall. And at City Hall, we have more than 200 trees here on our property. And we measured all in all, 286 trees. And at 32 inches diameter, about 1% of those are larger and would be protected. 24 inches is 15%. At 12 inches diameter, you get to the majority of, over the majority of trees are protected. And at 6 inches diameter, 92% of the trees that we measured were larger and would be protected. Some of the other consideration, stumps, and we'll talk about these more as a part of the recommendations, stumps, top trees, violations of the ordinance have all been brought up as concerns in the past. If there is any change to the ordinance, we would absolutely do significant outreach and education. We would need to outreach directly to residents, businesses, and very importantly, outreach to the tree trimming companies, who are the ones that are usually most familiar with when a permit is needed and for what sizes. They're the ones that come in and obtain most of the permits that we see. So the staff recommendation is to eliminate the residential lot exemption. And all of these, by the way, are represented in the proposed ordinance amendment that is included in your package, to continue to protect native oaks over 6 inches. On non-residential and residential, we look to strike a balance between the City of Sacramento code and the Davis code. And so the recommendation for non-residential, commercial, et cetera, is all trees over 12 inches diameter. On residential, it would be 24 inches diameter and larger. Require stumps to be removed within one year of adoption, if adopted by city council. Prohibit the topping of protected trees. For violations, the current ordinance requires an inch-per-inch replacement or payment in lieu. And what that means is, if someone were to remove, for example, a 12-inch diameter tree that is healthy, it isn't just replaced with one tree, it would be required to be replaced with 12 trees if it was removed in violation of this chapter. Or replaced, or a payment in lieu, which amounts to about $2,000 for a 12-inch tree.
And that would be on a residential lot, so somebody on a 6,500-square-foot lot that took out a tree that they thought was falling over, something like, where they didn't get a permit or something like that? Would you require them to plant 12 trees on their property?
It's only if the tree was healthy. So if somebody wasn't aware of the ordinance, they removed a tree, but after the fact, somehow we were able to determine that it was dead, diseased, or dying, whether it's residential or commercial, then it's just a one-for-one replacement.
Okay. But only if you can determine that post, like somebody took a picture or something like that, that you can somehow prove it?
If somebody took a picture, or if we could look at the stump after the fact, or...
I mean, it's a highly unlikely situation. I'm just kind of wondering, because, you know, somebody goes back in, then they remove whatever it is that they shouldn't have, you know, putting 12 redwoods or something back in your yard isn't exactly fixing the problem either. So, okay. Can I ask, how does this affect, and I know David, you and Linda probably spend a lot more time talking about this than I have on council and the code committee, but when a tree gets like mistletoe, and I've seen it where, they don't even top it, they just take everything off of it, because that's, from what I've been told, that's the only thing you can do in order to address mistletoe? And I don't know if that's, I know our arborist isn't here tonight, but is that considered topping of a tree?
It would be, topping of a tree would be an unneeded removal of all of the upper branches. So if there was a reason that was recommended for a treatment of that tree recommended by an arborist, that would not be topping the tree.
Would it be approved by our arborist, or somebody goes out and hires BUDS or some other tree trimming company that's in town? I mean, that's a company I use in my office, but if it was determined it has mistletoe, I mean, from what I understood, there is no other option besides doing that.
There are approved ways for removing mistletoe, and the best example that's ever happened in this county is when Arden Park, probably 20 years ago, went through, and because they were infested with mistletoe.
And we have neighborhoods that like that, too.
And they all went through, they had a huge neighborhood project, everything from White Avenue to, not Whitney, I don't know, Eastern, and Arden to Fair Oaks Boulevard, and they wholesale removed all the mistletoe. And it left a tree canopy, it did not whack off the trees, it did not do what the guys at the Chesapeake Commons did, taking, going back down to nothing but giant branches with denuded branches that will never grow back again. You know, there are approved ways to get rid of mistletoe, and besides that, Steve's on the Tree Foundation Board, and he can bring us those talents, and they even have tools to lend.
Good to know. Just wanted, thank you. Other questions for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
So the old ordinance is 19.4, and the new ordinance is 19.12. Is that accurate?
We retained the numbering for the old and the new ordinances. The old 1904 is for protection of public trees, and we have a new 1904, which is still protection of public trees. What the old 1912 is protection of private trees, which is what we've been talking the most about this evening, and the new 1912 is the same. So we've retained the numbering.
Okay, so we do not have copies of the old ordinances?
That's correct.
Just have copies of the new ordinances?
That's correct.
Okay, super. Yeah, I know, believe me. That's why I asked, because I wanted to make sure I was getting that correctly. Yeah, because there's... Okay, so, any rate, in 19.12, I did have just a couple of comments. On page nine, we're now using the term diameter at standard height. And when I left permitting, everybody was using DBH, and so my question is, are we inventing a term that nobody knows, or are we using a term that is now common in ordinances and the industry?
The industry has transitioned to the standard term is diameter at standard height.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I don't, I would not like to see us repeat the mistakes we made with the zoning code, where we invented a whole bunch of new stuff that nobody knew what it was. Public, the definition of public trees, item Y, does public trees, it talks about easements, public premises, public sidewalk, median, traffic islands, and other things like that. But around here, we happen to have a bunch of medians and traffic islands and easements, et cetera, that are owned by CRPD. So this would not apply to them. Or would it? So that would be something we should clarify.
Good point.
It also doesn't address negotiating with PG&E when they want to come through and chop down thorns, and it doesn't address negotiating with smud when they want to chop the interiors out of trees, because we have a whole bunch of backyards that have wires along the rear property line.
The utilities would be subject to this ordinance as well.
Great.
So they'd have to replace the tree if they had to cut it down because it was down to a point where it would be nothing but a stub?
As the ordinance is currently written, if they removed the tree with good reason, they would have to replace it with one tree.
And we've negotiated a settlement even with PG&E over that this year.
It was lovely. So, now you're going to think this is very odd coming from me, but 19.12-170 and 19.12-180 on page 19. Just, just a minor question, first of all, we talk about a tentative tract map, do people know that that's a tentative subdivision map? Tract is kind of an old-fashioned word.
I agree with you, tentative subdivision map is the terminology used in the MAP Act, so that would be more consistent.
Okay, so we should probably substitute that.
Agree.
Okay, now, this takes a very strident note. No application shall be considered complete unless it includes a report which pertains to the preservation of the tree. And that one's a little more expanded, but then, when we talk about parcel maps, no application for preliminary parcel map approval for a parcel where a protected tree is located shall be considered complete unless it includes a report pertaining to preserving the tree. Now, I have to tell you, all over this county, in places where there are large lots, like acres or whatnot, as, when people, in the past, when people have brought forward parcel maps, because you only get four parcels with a parcel map, and it's typically a small lot, or you're somebody who's trying to put up like a flag lot, or you have, you want to build a house behind, sell off the property in the rear, a deep lot, and sell off the property, and then put in another lot back there. There have been times when even oak trees have been what stood between a project being feasible and not being feasible. If you've, if you've got a parcel and you can divide it into four, losing one parcel to save a tree may kill the whole project. So we really probably ought to say something more equivalent to evaluating the applicant's desire to remove a tree, say, you know, find, because you've used a lot of nice language in 170 that talks about removal, replacement, and relocation, and maybe some of that could be replicated in 180, but it's, it's, we don't have that so much right now, simply because we're, we're very much an urban environment with urban lots. But there may be a point in time where we'll wish we had allowed people to talk about alternatives as opposed to simply saving everything. So, that's my question.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Just kind of along that same line, is that be the same thing as when you're putting in a new development and you have to mitigate the wetlands or something like that? If you could just remove the tree and put in another tree like it someplace else, would that be the same thing? Or is that separate from wetlands and doing a mitigate over here, and you're going to take this tree out, you're going to put another tree over there, or something like that? Wouldn't that be the same thing, or is that completely different because it's a tree?
It's, it is similar in that our code allows, the code requires first that if a tree is removed, that you evaluate opportunities to replace on-site. And if that's not feasible for various reasons, then there's the ability to replace off-site. And I also wanted to point out that, let's see where it is here. In, on the top of page 13, which is 1912-070F, one of the decision criteria for providing a permit is whether or not preservation of the tree would compromise the reasonable use of an owner's development of land.
And you're right, that kind of answers that question. I agree. Because we don't want it to be a taking. I see what you mean, under the heading of decision criteria.
So it does provide us that flexibility, that this can't completely stop development of a property.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And I would also just add for the record that it's not a taking if you don't allow the maxing out of a land use, even in the scenario that you just described, where they weren't able to get the maximum number possible of lots, or the optimal configuration. number possible of lots or the optimal configuration, there wouldn't necessarily be a taking.
Okay. And I, and I appreciate that. It's just that it's different if you're looking at a subdivision with a dozen or multiple dozens of parcels or hundreds of parcels relative to a parcel map, which is your only piece of property and you can only get four parcels out of it. So, I just wanted to bring that up. But I appreciate that sentence.
Other questions for staff?
Just a sort of framing comment. Lynda and I think were both kind of shocked when, I don't know how many years ago now it's been, Lynda, that the Sacramento Tree Foundation informed us that our tree canopy in Rancho Cudovin was down by some whopping big percentage.
Huge number. Yeah, we've got like 25%.
Right.
Or something.
And, and I, that just stuck in my mind, you know? And as, as you go around town and you started noticing, you know, is this possible? I began to realize how many stumps were actually in people's front yards. And this is several years ago now. Or how many spots that would have had a tree when the house was built, when the developer built it 30 years ago, now don't have a tree. And I think that number may not be so out of whack as we thought.
It's not. It's, it's, even in, even in our new neighborhoods, you know, my neighborhood is, is basically 15 or 16 years old. And as I have complained before, you can't believe the number of empty lots. No trees.
And there are, there are really big impacts to having those, those treeless lots. You know, obviously, your air conditioning bill's going to go up if you don't have some shade. Your, your local environment in terms of air quality is worse because you don't have the tree. The property value is less because you don't have the tree.
The heat factor into the atmosphere is more.
The urban, urban heat factors are, are there. So, I mean, there's no really, no really good reason not to have a tree. Except now, I understand people are tearing down trees or cutting out trees because of their solar panels. And they want, that's an interesting environmental trade-off, actually. So I want solar on my house.
I have a neighborhood did that.
So I cut down the trees so I can get solar. In the big picture, I'm not sure that's a win. For that, homeowner, it might be. But, big picture, I, I don't know. That'd be some interesting, that'd be some interesting math. So, I, I am really hesitant to go to homeowners and say, thou shalt not, you know, and create mandates and rules and fines and, and that sort of thing over trees. But I do think, you know, that we've got some, some overall responsibility here because of the impacts that the absence of these trees do have for our residents and for our city. So there, there has to be some happy balance. This one is talking about residential trees over 24 inches in diameter. So that's a really kind of a small subset of the trees that are out there. There, I don't know how many, how many people actually would have a 24-inch tree on their property. But, my suggestion is, however we do this, and frankly, we've already begun, cities always have a choice of, you can approach something with a stick and try to correct it and punish the, the people who made a mistake, or you can approach it with a carrot and try to encourage good behavior. This is, for me, clearly a carrot situation, where a carrot's going to be more successful. So, we have just launched a trial program to remove stumps from properties that have had stumps. It's a code violation to have a stump. It's always been a code violation to have a stump. But we have a trial program now to help people get rid of the stump. And by the way, when we're getting rid of the stump, we also plant a new tree. So that's sort of a net.
I have two neighbors who need that.
Win. And we might, we might consider ways to enhance that, to, to facilitate that. And we have been having tree planting challenges for probably near a decade here in Rancho Cudovin. Been pretty successful at it, but there's a lot more we could do. So I, I would encourage us to think really hard about the, the carrots we can offer, to try to achieve that goal of greatest tree coverage as opposed to just the stick. And, and a separate comment, that was all sort of residential commentary. On, on the commercial side, what we see are a lot of businesses who I think get tired of paying for a tree maintenance bill, or think the trees are blocking their view, or a new owner comes in and wants, just wants a change, and they just cut down, you know, all the trees on their front edge. Several examples of that.
Absolutely.
Have happened. Or they top trees that shouldn't be topped, all, all that sort of craziness that happens. And of course, in commercial properties, when they're approved for development, they have a certain landscape plan. And the deal is, they got to maintain that landscape plan. And I think we have all the tools necessary to enforce that. But if we can enhance that in any way through this process, that would, that would be good.
I think you're, what you brought up about, that really is a good question, though, about the solar panels. Because some of the new homes, like in our homes, they have, the roofs are actually solar panels. So, you have the trees there, then is that going to stop the most effective use of that solar panel? Or, yeah, that's a good question. I hadn't thought about that, David.
Well, the, you know, the, again, in terms of background, that there, there's no question that, that for property values, the old tree shaded houses and streets have, just look around, they have, even here on the West Coast, it's not just the East Coast, they have the highest property values. And, and when you drive down some of our streets, you think, my word, we will never have the incredible tree canopies that you see. Even in places that have fought mistletoe, like Arden Park, okay? Or downtown in East Sacramento, or all these places that a lot of us grew up with. Didn't grow up in Arizona. But, you know, if that's, that's really the kind of image, it's, that's the kind of property value that we want to create for people. But I'm hoping that this also comes with a redesign of our approved tree list that we provide to both commercial landscape architects as well as residential landscape architects. Because we've been talking for quite some time now about ways in which to kind of head this off at the pass, David. So like, I would be the first to admit that the trees in my neighborhood were a dreadful selection. Some of them are great, the, the California Alders, White Alder, whatever it is. On the streets where we have oak trees, if somebody got a male oak tree that didn't produce acorns, that's a good idea. If they got a female, they have 100,000 little oak trees coming up in their yard. And, and, and I, I'm not exaggerating. And so Cyrus and I talked at one point about whether or not we could encourage fruit and nut trees to be used as landscape trees. Especially for people who, especially now with, you know, kind of the farm-to-fort movement, could we offer, could we offer cherries, or pecans, or walnuts, or, you know, it's almost like going back to when we did subdivisions in the 60s and 70s in the citrus and almond orchards up in Fair Oaks and Citrus Heights and Orange Vale. You know, it's like going back to those eras. Can we plant, can we encourage people to plant something that has a greater emotional life expectancy than, than a Little Leaf Linden, which is, is not making friends with anybody on my street. So, you know, hopefully, and, and then again, in terms of drought, if we really, if we really think we need to provide trees that don't consume quite as much water, then do we transition away from redwoods, which have always been everybody's go-to, go-to screening tree? And in the last couple of years, we've had a couple of people actually come in and spec some meskets, which everybody assumes is a Sonoran desert tree. But meskets make beautiful trees. And there's bound to be something that, there's apparently a variety that is, is adaptable to this climate, that doesn't need just the hot sunshine. So we really, you know, we, we need to, it's, it's like David said, if you go for the, the carrot approach, we need to provide them some alternatives to the things that typically have been considered standards.
I've got another, might as well, when we're talking about, protect residential trees over 24 inches in diameter whose roots are cracking the sidewalk. And the owner is responsible for the sidewalks. And so where do you go from there?
There are reasons that allow for removal of a tree. And if the tree is damaging property, if it's aged, diseased, or dying, if it's a risk to lifer property, then those are all reasons that, that a residential or commercial property could remove the tree. And it's not subject to that inch per inch replacement, it's one for one.
Okay.
So if they needed to remove that tree because it's lifting their foundation, or damaging the, doing, making significant damage to the driveway, that can't be mitigated in a different way. If there's room on the property for a better location, for a better tree, they can do that.
You know, that's been brought up to us about the roots damaging the sidewalks. Then we had the sidewalk, the panel is about this far up, so you hate, you know, you kind of raise that up a little bit so it'll smoothen out. But you can only go so far with that, too. And so, yeah, there's, that was brought to us on, over the years in our city council meetings.
Other questions for staff? Okay. Do you have the feedback that you need? I don't know, do we need a formal motion on this? No. Actually, well, no, I've got it written down that we do.
Yes, yes, you do. It says introduction of an ordinance.
Okay.
Oh. That's not what it says.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because this is a draft and he'll bring back a variety of revisions.
So we don't need a motion?
Or refinements.
I have a public speaker card.
Oh, okay, we'll take that.
Darryl Langwell.
We knew you'd be waiting to just say something.
Darryl Langwell Vineyards Neighborhood. Vice Mayor Bud touched on what I was curious about, where the, where the diameter is measured at. What is standard height?
There is a definition.
It, there is. It's four and a half feet above the ground surface.
And another thing you brought up with acorns, if you have a palm tree in the area, you have little palms sprouting all over the place.
I know. I lived in a house that one sprouted right next to the condenser unit outside. And I wondered, that was such a stupid place to plant it. Then I realized my neighbor had a 20-foot palm tree.
Darryl, you know I don't believe in palm trees, they're just big grass.
Bring the chainsaw for that, I guess, it's, I'm not sure.
No protection for palm trees.
No protection for palm trees.
Especially from Lynda Budge.
Notice that they don't appear in the code.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Okay. With that, you got what you need?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Okay. Now we'll go to 16.4, resolution setting the 2018 city council meeting calendar.
City staff has been very busy working on our 2018 calendar. And as part of our annual business planning for the upcoming year, the city council reviews the next year's calendar and determines its meeting schedule for the following year. In your agenda packets, you received a proposed council meeting schedule for 2018. And city staff would like for you to discuss and approve an adopted 2018 council meeting schedule, along with adopting resolution number 137-2017.
Stacy, could I ask a favor, please? Exhibit A, no, never mind. I did get all pages. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
You should probably give us a date.
Darryl, are you commenting on this, too? No, okay.
Give us a date, give us a date to respond by.
Well, what would you like?
Oh, I guess we're not going to comment tonight.
Well, you, you're asking for comments.
I, I am asking for comments. If, if we like this schedule as is, we can approve today. If you would like more time to coordinate your calendars, then we can come back.
I would, I would probably suggest, let's bring this back on the consent. And if it needs to be pulled at that point, then we can, by then, have.
That would be good.
Squared our calendars. Because I know I'm not ready to, to vote on it yet.
That would be good.
But, I'm already putting things for like June of next year, so, that's just me.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council at the next council meeting in.
It'd be early December, right? Are we canceling?
No, November.
November 20th.
Oh, the 20th, okay, that's right. We have one that week. I know with NLC, we were canceling. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do want to recognize that Marshall Johnson is still with us, hanging out for the whole, the whole meeting. He wa, he actually wondered, and, and we had to explain to him that none of his predecessors actually do this. So, we appreciate the, the extra attention. And so with that, we'll move on to the council request for future agenda items. So I do have one. I know it was brought up in our close session meeting that we had, but I did want to say, or state it in public so that council could start to prepare to bring it to us, is to bring a draft ordinance and plan for a down payment assistance program for employees for first time home, well, no, down payment assistance program, not just for first time home buyers, for us to discuss at the next possible meeting that we have. Because I think we've talked it to death and we have a plan, we just need to vote on it. So, do we have other council members that are comfortable of discussing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We assume it, it comes with a plan for funding?
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
This is actually revenue generating, perhaps.
It could be revenue generating if, if managed correctly, yes. It, it would give us a better return on our reserve in investments than, than current, than current returns in your local savings accounts. Okay? Any other requests for future agenda items?
Yeah.
Hold on, I wrote this out. This is my first one. Mr. Mayor F. L., Councilmember and City Staff, I would like to request that the city conduct a special study session within the next three days on the impact and development fees. I'm interested in learning more as, as well as receiving analysis. What is the average on the new home sales price in the major communities of Sacramento, Folsom, Sac County, Eldorado Hills, Elk Grove, Roseville, West Sac? And how do we stack up? Why is there a perception that our impact fees are, are high? Do we have the stats that we can all review, then provide a regional analysis of Rancho Cudovin compared to the other cities? I understand these questions may have a policy implication that has been discussed before, but I want to better understand, as newest council member, the process and how we came to these decisions.
I don't think it'll happen in the next 30 days. But we can look to have it put on the calendar for, in a future agenda item, probably a, a workshop.
That's not what I said.
Yes.
That'd be great.
So two of us would like to discuss that. Is there a third council member?
That's fine.
Okay. So we have three. So we'll work on, and, excuse me, weaving that into the agenda plans for early next year.
I want to congratulate staff on the FY 2016, 2017 Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Report that is just hot off the press.
I also have an item I'd like to suggest for a future agenda item. And it's actually one that's been raised before, but we haven't formally added it to any agenda. Region Business has a proposal they're calling RISE, which would allow responsible investments for stronger economy. Basically, it is a suggestion that if you partner with local banks to facilitate deposits made by the city that would normally be in, like our statewide LEAF, LEAF funds, if you arrange to deposit those instead of local banks, they will guarantee a certain amount of lending activity with businesses in your community. And so it's an economic development strategy. I know there are thoughts on both sides of it, but I think, given that some other jurisdictions are already engaging in this, in our region, it's probably a discussion we ought to have and look at.
Discussion.
I agree.
Okay, we have three? Great.
Got it.
And I think everyone got an email on that today, if I'm not mistaken.
Any other ones? We've got a whole bunch.
It's unusual to have.
Keep coming, because, yeah, we haven't even had one in, for like four months. Okay? Okay. That's it? Okay. Moving on to adjournment, we will be adjourning in the memories of Ken Collins, James Arnold, Jim Emerson, Dale Steelman. And I'd also like to add the 26 people that lost their lives in Sutherland Springs, Texas. And so with that, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you.